Being that it's seven o'clock, I'm called the planning board meeting of Thursday, June 25th, 2020 to order. It is a remote meeting. Secretary Kathy Murray is present. In accordance with the governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, Mass General Law 30A, Section 20 relating to the 2020 Nobel Coronavirus outbreak emergency, the June 25th, 2020 public hearing, public meeting of the planning board shall be physically closed to the public to avoid group congregation. However, to view this meeting in progress, please go to facebook.com backslash lake cam. You do not need Facebook account to view the meeting. Meeting will be recorded and available to view at a later date at www.lakecam.tv backslash. I just want to ask before we get started, is anyone else recording the meeting? I'll take that as a no. So first item on our agenda is the public hearing of Pauline's Path. Would you say that's accurate Kathy? I mean, I have number one as read agenda item, number one to the record. And that is the coronavirus, right? Yeah. Okay, so we're opening the reopening the public hearing to Pauline's Path, 73 Howland Road. It's the application for definitive subdivision plan for residential subdivision. Would you like to speak to that Niles?
Yes. Good evening. For the record, Niles Zager from Zenith Consulting Engineers. Here to present the project at 73 Howland Road. So basically, I'll try to go through a little bit of a presentation and give you guys an idea of what looking to do and then obviously open it up to any questions that they have. So as stated, the property is located at 73 Howland Road. It has an existing house located kind of near, right near Howland Road, up close to the road. The property is approximately 21.37 acres and it's located in the residential zoning district. It has an associated VFW located, ordering vegetated wetland located towards the east and north of the property. There is also a small portion of the property that's located within the flood zone A, but the majority of the properties outside of that 100 year flood, which would be Zone X. The topography is very undulating. If you've been out there, I mean, it's all over the place. It ranges anywhere from a high point of elevation 95 and down at the wetlands of elevation 60-ish and goes even below that. So there's a fairly significant slopes there. The proposal for this project is a three, is basically it's a new road called Pauline's Path. It's creating three new Form C lots off of that new road. And then there's one new Form A lot on Howland Road. We're gaining our frontage on Howland Road. And then there's the existing lot of 73 Howland Road where the existing home will reside. And that will be done by a Form A, as a Form A lot as well. The proposed roadway itself is approximately 600 feet in length. It has 14 feet of pavement and three feet of gravel on either sides or it has a total access width of 20 feet. The end of the road is provided with a hammerhead turnaround for emergency access. As far as stormwater goes, the, we're basically what we're doing is we're creating an infiltration basin, which would be towards the east of the project near the VFW, near that wetland. All the stormwater is being conveyed to that infiltration basin either by just grading and/or grass whales. That infiltration basin also is provided with a sediment forbey. Does erosion control measures, meaning silt fence and silt sock that are proposed all along the, pretty much the limited work on the downhill slope of the property. And that's shown on our erosion control plans. We've also provided a construction entrance pad at the entrance of the proposed roadway of Pauline's Path. Basically what that is, is just a stone pad that when they're going to construct it, it's a 75 foot long by 20 foot wide, roughly 20 to 25 foot wide pad allows for construction vehicles. It allows the tires to have the dirt knocked off of them. So you will limit the amount of dirt and debris that gets into Howland Road. All the work within the 100 foot buffer zone to the wetlands has been approved by Conservation Commission, including the roadway construction as well as lots two through four. Lot one, as shown in the plan, was not because it was completely outside their jurisdiction. Per tests have all been proposed and have all been performed, I should say, on site. They've been witnessed by the Board of Health as well as individual septic system site plans have been submitted to the Board of Health and approved as well. There, basically the idea is this subdivision is going to be a private road. It's going to, it's not, we're not looking for it to be taken over by the town. We're looking for it to stay private in perpetuity. There will be a homeowners associated with it that will have to be created at some point by the applicant. And that's, that's really about it. That's kind of like a quick generic overview of the project. And obviously be happy to answer any more detailed or concerns, questions that you, that the board has.
I had a couple of questions before I open up to the board. Kathy, did we receive any comment? I did my best to look through some of those emails that came in from the highway department. You're muted.
No, received nothing from highway.
And nothing from the building department either?
No.
Okay. Niles, I had done estimation based on, and I think you could arbitrate either way. I had 550 feet on the road length because of the hammerhead, but I think the road layout gives you the 600 with a circle.
That's correct.
It's good you're through conservation. I spoke to Jamie a couple of weeks ago because I think we thought this was going to be back on the agenda at one of our last meetings. But I did request for him to write right on the plan that there would be an operations and maintenance plan to be included on the plan of record. Is that written on the plan?
There's, there's an operation and maintenance plan on the erosion control plan. It would be sheet, let me try to find it here. W1. It's right before the detail sheet.
Okay.
So that is part of, that's always part of all our subdivision plans. It's a, it has a pre-construction or, you know, pre and post-construction maintenance and erosion control plan. So it's pretty specific as to what to do during construction and post-construction as far as stabilization and cleaning structures. And again, this is a very, very simple drainage design. There's really no structures. All it is, is like I said, it's a, all of the stormwater is conveyed through grass whales and then into a sediment forbey and an infiltration basin. So there's no, there's actually no structures at all. So as far as maintenance goes and, you know, it's all, it's very, very contained and very simple.
Yeah. And, and again, I'm not looking for, I just want to make sure because it's a private way that there's something written on the plan. And we also, again, with a conversation with Jamie, we wanted either an association formed or some sort of a deed restriction put on the lots that said that they were responsible for that operations and maintenance of the roadway.
Yeah, absolutely.
We do not want that to be overlooked so that it comes back on the town.
Yeah, absolutely. No, the idea, and again, we've always, and when we've, we've done a few of these types of waivered and, you know, waivered subdivisions, roadways of this nature in town and they've all with the understanding that they had to remain private with homeowners associations. So I completely agree that, you know, that you need to do that.
My discussion with him though, I think the main point of the option was you really only have three lots on the roadway because one's a Form A. And it may not make sense to form an association. That might be a financial burden. And I don't know, Jamie was going to say they would put it to their attorney. I was fine with either one. A deed restriction is probably cheaper in this instance because it's probably just somebody walking through that retention pond with a string trimmer a couple of times a year and knocking the stuff down and they got to clean their own roadway for a snowing. Where it's gravel, they don't really need to sand probably, but you know, it's basically limited maintenance for three house lots. So we didn't want to have some big, like a condo association that cost them more than it was worth to set it up if they could do it in a cheaper manner as long as it got done.
Of course.
Mr. Chairman, can I speak to that?
Go right ahead.
I think the alternative might be something along the lines of a PUD, which is, I don't remember what that stands for, but when you're listing, when you're putting properties on the market, you have to represent whether there's an HOA or, which is a homeowners association, or there's other development requirements for the property. So I really like the idea of having something beyond the deed. But the fact of the matter is when the homeowners own that property, it becomes a little bit confusing about what the rules are and the benefit to having the PUD established or an HOA in the event you want to go that extensively does create a burden. So maybe there's a middle ground that the attorney can advise on.
So, you know, I think that whatever we do tonight will reflect that. And part of that will be the certification of the roadway was to make sure that that's done.
Absolutely.
Would anybody else like to speak to this?
Yeah, Mark, I have a question of Niles. Does he, do they see the need possibly for any kind of barriers or guide rails? I'm not saying extensive ones, but in some cases you're looking at like a seven and eight foot drop. Once you get beyond the gravel sides, do they have any thoughts of that? Maybe just in those extreme sections or?
We can absolutely look at that. I think there's really only probably one spot because the right, the, as you go down the right side of the road.
Big way down on the right?
Yeah, on the right, you, it's not, you don't really have it, but on the left, there is one little section there. If that's something that the board would like, we can absolutely provide it along that. It's probably about 100 to 150 feet in or so. There's a, there's a section there that we could.
What would you say the grade is on the plan, Niles?
It's 70, between 74 to 72 in the road. And then it drops down to probably, what does that drop down to? 70, 66, 67? So it drops about five, five or six feet. It's really not.
Is it a one to one or is?
It's a three to one. It's a three to one. Yeah. So it's not, it's not that significant. I don't think it's really enough to warrant a guide rail. I mean, honestly, this is with the gravel, you've got, you're going to have 14 feet of pavement and then you're going to have the gravel that kind of acts like a rumble strip in my opinion. You know, so I think it kind of, you know, I think it's going to kind of add, you know, warn people that, you know, hey, I'm getting close. But we can absolutely look at that if you would like.
I don't think, Mark, if it's okay with you, I mean, I don't think that they should plan on doing it now, but possibly like once, once the road's in and it's graded and they just, you know, let, let their conscience be their guide and say, oh, wait a second, maybe we should put something in here because it's, it's maybe possibly ends up a little steeper than it, than it looks, you know?
Niles, you think you could push the grading out to be four to one and just kind of make it a non-issue?
Yeah, I think we could make that a condition of the approval. Absolutely. Yeah, that's not an issue at all.
Do you think that would work, Peter? If they just feather the grade out so it's more gradual than a drop?
I think so. You know, I think the excavators will, will do their best with what they have to work with when it's done. It was only maybe two spots at the most, one on the left and one on the right and it's not much. I was just concerned. I did see like a six and an eight foot, it looked like to me that's a little much. If a car, you know, starts to lose it, they're going to lose it a lot, you know?
Right.
It is, it's, it's basically a private driveway for two houses. So they'll, they'll know what to do. So.
Michelle, do you have anything? Would you like to speak to this? Even questions for your own education?
I saw that there was, you know, a good amount of wetlands and the buffer zone and is, is there any plans for anything in that? I know they have to be very careful in that sort of area.
You guys, Niles, you had mentioned you had gone through the Conservation Commission for approval already. And that's been complete. So that's part of the silt fence barrier that he talked about initially is the Conservation Commission drives that, the location of, and they're allowed to work within the 100 foot buffer zone. But that triggers the Conservation Commission's involvement is once you go within 100 feet of the wetlands, they have jurisdiction to review the plans and make sure that it's not going to harm the wetlands. So that board has done that for us. Which is good.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for you.
Go right ahead.
I understand this parcel was under 61A previously. And so as it comes out of 61A, there is the option for the town to purchase this asset for additional open space. I didn't see anything from the other boards in comments about that. Do you know if any, there was any interest in a purchase?
At this point, I think it's still looming. At the Selectments meeting the other night, there was the effort to try to move that process along. I think Open Space Committee was trying to do something and I don't know if it's stalled or where it's at. But do you know what the next status of that is, Niles?
To be honest with you, I've been, I know attorney Michael Shaughnessy has been dealing with that. And I believe that there really hasn't been any headway other than what you've stated. So, you know, I think we're kind of still in limbo on that end.
Okay. And I did just recently send you guys a draft motion if we do approve this. And that was a condition of it is that the motion would be subject to the town's option to purchase under 61 chapter rights.
We completely understand that.
Yeah. And there's nothing we can do if they exercise that right would basically be going through the motions to approve the roadway pending that decision.
Of course.
Anyone else have any other comments?
I'm good, Mark. We've, like I said, we've looked at this, we looked at it four months ago and I've looked at it since we got these earlier in the week and it's a, it's a very clean, it's a very clean project, you know?
Yeah. Brian, would you like to add anything?
Yeah, I would ask, Niles, how large is a lot size?
There, a minimum of 70,000 square feet, but very large. A lot of them actually much larger. I can give you, so you just go along with it. I'm sorry.
There's only two, correct?
There's actually three.
Three and a Form A.
Correct. So the, so lot one is 71 roughly thousand square feet. Lot two is about nine acres. So it's a very large open space kind of parcel.
Yes.
Lot three is about six acres. And lot four is about just over 72,000 square feet. So the minimum.
So where's, where's lot one? Out on Howland?
Lot one is actually behind 73 Howland. It's the first, it's the first lot on Pauline's Path on the left, but it's behind the existing home.
Okay.
So the two larger lots are in the back, in the, in the back of the property.
Yep. Niles, I'm actually looking at that right now. Can you tell me if it's on the definitive subdivision plan, but are we approving 73 Howland Road as an ANR or has that already been done?
That has not been done. That will have to get done as an ANR.
Are we going to do that separately or are you going to have us, would you like that done?
We're going to have to do it separately. We're, we're going to have to do that separately.
Okay.
I believe. I'll confirm that, but I believe, I believe we have to do that as a, as a separate because it's, it's, it really isn't an ANR lot.
That being the case then, Mr. Chair, I believe we, we would have to defer on approving the existing plans until that's resolved, correct? Because the plan shows that in place, but it's not actually approved yet.
Or we condition pending the approval of the 73.
That's fine too.
On the road ANR lot.
Yeah.
And I can confirm, I'll get back to the, I'm going to, that's actually a good question for the attorney. I'm not, maybe this, there is a way into the Form C to do this, but I believe it has to be done under an ANR.
So it doesn't make sense to make it an ANR if this plan doesn't go through and the conserva, yeah, the 61A chapter rights aren't invoked by the town. It doesn't make sense to do that. It would need to be almost conditioned for tonight's purposes. Say, we're not approving 73 Howland Road, but that would be pending an ANR approval after the fact because it makes no sense. Unless you didn't involve the same night because you knew you were done with the 61A thing.
Yes, we could do that.
I'm wondering if anybody who's present on the meeting is from the public or what? I know obviously the abutters were notified of this hearing. Do we have anybody from the community that's has feedback on this development? I don't know who all is on this show.
Em or Cindy?
I guess I'm just in the butter in the neighborhood behind it.
Okay. Do you, do you have any comments? Would you, do you have any feedback for us? Have you seen the plans?
I haven't, sorry. I have not seen the plans, but I'm just kind of listening. It's all fine with me.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Any other public comment? Being that there's no other public comment, I'd like to propose a motion to close the hearing and recommend approval of Pauline's Path with the following conditions. That this approval is pending, that 73 Howland Road be approved separately as an ANR lot. An operations and maintenance plan be included on the plan of record. An association of all lots, landowners on Pauline's Path be formed by the developer that clearly makes the operations and road maintenance and stormwater recovery. And I have road maintenance twice. The responsibility of the residents of the subdivision. A bond be posted for $9,000 and held until completion of the roadway and written certification of construction compliance. Bond will be released when all road and stormwater drainage construction have been completed and inspected by a third party engineer at the cost of the developer. Said certification will be stated in a letter stamped by the engineer. And this motion is subject to the town's option to purchase under Chapter 61 Rights of First Refusal. And we have one condition we just wrote in of that the grade on the road edge would be no steeper than a four to one slope or you'd possibly have to put a guide rail. Can I get a second? Okay, we have a motion and a second. I'm going to do a roll call vote. We'll start with Barbara.
Aye.
Peter?
Aye, Peter.
Michelle?
Aye.
And Mark Knox, aye. So we have a unanimous vote. Motion passes. And that's it. We should be all set, Niles, pending those few little things.
Of course. No, I really appreciate it, everyone. And everyone have a great night.
Thanks, Niles. See you.
Take care.
Eugene and Al.
Good to see you as well.
So Kathy, I'm, I'm going to clean up this motion that I have drafted and I'll email it to you. So you don't have to get that back off the recording.
Okay.
Mark, do you mind sending me a copy of that as well? I know it's going to be on the minutes, but that was.
I will resend. I did send you one just before the meeting, but I'll have to amend it with those conditions we just changed. So absolutely.
Which are all good. Thank you.
Yeah. And I, I'm not going to do it now though. I'll wait till after the meeting so I don't get distracted. But so next on the agenda was the meet with Jamie Bissonette regarding the GIS system, which we're going to hold that off until a later meeting. We don't even know if it'll be the next one really, right Kathy?
No, he did say the next meeting.
Okay. So if you want to make note to have that on the agenda. Item four on the agenda is an ANR plan continued for Reservoir Ave, which Dave Madigan told me he can't come. Derek Maxey was going to come in, but he also asked me and I don't think he's going to come into the meeting. We had a chance to look at this at the last meeting. And we had requested for the zoning, no determination zoning note be added to the plan, which after the fact we were, it was told that it was there. So we will sign a copy or I propose to approve that with that zoning note on there. Does everybody remember these plans? There were zoned business at the end of Reservoir Drive, part of the golf course on the 18th hole. They, they meet the criteria for approval not required lots as much as I don't want to approve them because of the business zoning there. But the, and I don't know if you got to this, Michelle, in the ANR handbook, it is silent on zoning. All it has to do with is lot criteria based on town bylaws. So.
If they don't plan on using that for business, it's going to be residential?
We don't know that.
Mark, is there a way that we could make sure that if the lot is disturbed by over one acre that we have a site plan review with these? Because it's going to be difficult to not disturb one acre there in the process of building. And that is our new plan.
I talked to Nate about this because there's also something about 1,500 square feet of structure, but it's actually not structure. It's structure, parking, loading, and whatever other disturbance. So that itself would trigger site plan review.
Okay.
I have a question on that. Is, is soil removal also included in that? Or am I off on that? I know there is some, there are some rules about how much soil can be removed.
Soil removal does not trigger site plan review.
Okay.
There might be some, well, there, there wouldn't be any soil removal from those lots if anything, you're going to bring it in because it's, right now it's a sledding mill. I actually talked to Nate about that with critical access as part of the ANR approvals. And ultimately, if somebody wanted to develop them, they could get a driveway down that hill, whether they had to build a retaining wall. But it's, they're not desirable from a developer standpoint because it just goes in and drops right off down to the 18th fairway. But from the critical access standpoint, I don't think that we could deny them the ANR rights. They could fight that in court and win. They could make them accessible.
Yep, agreed.
So Brian, would you like to speak to that at all?
I thought you were doing a pretty good job, but I think the ANR is approval not required. Typically it's just for a, like a. approval not required, um, typically, it's just for a, like a a deed transfer. Somebody would wanna subdivide a piece of property, they'd subdivide it.
Yep.
Zoning, regardless of, you know, grade or anything else, as long as they have the sufficient frontage, they have the sufficient land area for the site, um, individual lots.
Yeah, it's access area and frontage are the three, the three basic ones, but then in the town, in our requirements, we have to make sure that the plan has all of the abutters' names on it. I actually had it out. Needed to make sure that the engineer stamped the plan. So if we're gonna sign a copy, we need to make sure that he signed or stamped the plan. We asked for that zoning note. I could go through them.
Yeah, so that's all, I mean, basically, that's all that, um.
Yeah. Basically, a rubber stamp thing, if they meet the criteria.
Yeah. That's one of those, that's one of those conditions, Mark, where, you know, people in town will point fingers at you and call your names, just because you've approved something that you are forced to approve because of the law.
Right, and it's, it's out of our hands. The only thing that we can do is stay on the board long enough to know if that gets developed and somebody tries to put a business in there, that's when we would come into play to say, that's a residential neighborhood. You're developing business against residential properties, we have regulations that say that you need buffers, whether it be a tree line, sound buffers, hours of operation. Not to make it uncomfortable for the business, but to make it fair for the neighborhood, that it has to be a business that could almost be like an in-home business.
Well, also making it fair for the, for the neighborhood.
That, that's what I'm saying, is you wanna make it as fair as possible for the people that have been there for thirty years.
Yeah, and, and the, the golf course has been there for a long enough time with the, the, you know, the cart path that they have for a driveway. Once you, you know, you put businesses in there, something needs to be done to the road, and it'd be unfair to have the town, um, bear that burden, I think.
Absolutely.
That's very true.
And it, and another good thought, not, and it's, we're getting off track a little bit from the A and Rs, but it's a good opportunity to talk about this, is that if that is developed business, you could have what seems like the perfect business move-in, and it functioned fine, and the neighbors not be disgusted by it, but then a year or two later, the guy say, I'm moving to Florida and selling out, and then a guy go in there and say, I'm opening a trumpet factory. And we test trumpets. And if we don't condition it initially, cuz we don't get a chance to second condition it, because it's not a change of use, even if they change occupancy, as long as it's still business use. So we have to be very careful to condition it as stringently as possible, if it ever does give, get developed for business use, to think of the worst-case business possible and have to condition it to cover us for that, because like Brian says, that's when, why did you let that happen? Well, the guy that applied for the, the business use was testing cotton balls, and it was quiet, and he only did it from eleven o'clock to one o'clock in the afternoon, and he drove a bike to work. Well, that's great, it's like I say, perfect rosy, nobody's bothered by it, but then the cotton ball testing business goes out a year later, and they're doing something that's loud and obnoxious, and we look bad. So those are things that we have to think about when we do any project, when we ever, we do a site plan review, is think of what else could it go there and condition accordingly. So, on that note, this isn't really an approval, is it? It's just, uh, we recommend, a recommendation of approval. So I'm gonna make a motion to recommend approval of Lot One and Lot Two on Reservoir Ave's, uh, A and R plan.
I'll second that, Mark.
We have a motion and a second, we're gonna do a roll call, start with Barbara.
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
And Mark Knox, aye. So we have a unanimous vote, and the motion carries. And next item. So we have some zoning board of appeals items that come in front of us. I didn't really get a chance to look through them too much. First one is one oh three Staple Shores Road. Looks like, uh, looks like they're gonna, I think, tear down a house and put up a different house that would be closer to lot lines. I don't think that we have any comment on that, it's a residential. I think the ZBA would define that. Anybody else wanna speak to that on one oh three Staple Shores Road?
So typically, we don't comment on the, um, on the ZBA petitions unless we, there's something really striking about it, and I'm saying that more just for informational purposes, more for Michelle, who's new. They come before us and they, and they, we get copied on everything, but it's not really within our jurisdiction to make too many decisions about it, so, we typically will forward it without comment unless it's a burning issue. So I'm gonna make a motion to, um, approve, you know, pass on with no comment from the planning board.
We really need a motion for that? I mean, it looks like they're.
I don't know if we need a motion, yeah.
We're gonna not make a comment on one oh three Staple Shores Road.
Yep.
Next is Serphead, we have to do a commission appointment.
Yeah.
You might have reached out to me on this, Barbara. Is this something that you've been on a representative there before?
Yep. Past two years. So if someone else is interested, I don't wanna take the spot, but if nobody's interested, I love it, I think it's super fun.
All yours.
Michelle?
Go for it.
Make a motion to keep Barbara appointed as the Serphead Commission member for the local planning board.
I'll second that, Mark.
All right, all in favor, start with Barbara.
Do I, I get to vote for myself? Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Myself, vote aye. Motion passes unanimously, and next item, we're kinda doing some housekeeping stuff here. I had sent some information to Kathy to put on the agenda. I wanted to try and see if we could get emailed electronic files because of COVID. It's kinda tough to get paper copies, and it's not that I don't want the paper copies, I'm not looking to take that out of our application process as much as just kinda striking a one-line to squeeze in, and one electronic copy. And I think it would make it quicker for Kathy to get plans to us.
Yep.
So that's already the procedure? Almost every application comes in with a, I don't want a copy, or should?
The key is almost.
It's, it should.
Yeah, but yeah, I just, I kinda wanna just, we can amend our regulations pretty much anytime, that doesn't need to go in front of town meeting, we can.
It does. Any change to the regulations has to be, it's a, considered a public hearing, so you would ha- have to advertise that. Um, another strategy might just be to update the applications, include, include it on that. I've been reading some of them, planners on the listserv, and that's kinda what they're going to, so you don't have to advertise that. Uh, you know, that would be the board's decision.
Can you ask at Serphead, Barbara, because I know in the master plan, they say updating your regulations doesn't require town meeting vote on, like, if we wanted to try and change.
Not a town meeting, Mark, just a public hearing.
Yeah, well, that's fine, then, I wouldn't mind a public hearing if we needed to have a public hearing to change a regulation, that's just a couple meetings. But I think, and that might be not a bad thing either, is to have a public meeting, but we could also uh, change the application, like you said, Kathy. It's belt and suspenders. If we wanted to look at the application, add to make sure that it says, and one electronic copy. Um, and then what I'll do is during the week, I'm not gonna do it electronically, I'll do it with a pen and just line out or add in and kinda scan in a copy and circulate it to everybody in the board of where I think we should add in. It's basically in the A and R lots and in the site plan review for now, and then I'll look under the subdivision, the definitive subdivision plan as well. So there'll be three spots to add in how those plans come in, and then if it goes into the application as well, it's four spots that we've notified engineers that we'd like an electronic copy. And that's really just for quicker communication, so that if a set of plans comes in, we're not waiting until we can get by the office, we could start to glance at it and make a quick comment rather than two days before, and then an engineer's mad because he didn't have enough time to change it before, cuz he didn't get his email the next day, and so I just think it's better if we do something like that, especially with the COVID shutdown, and if this happens again next winter, where they don't let us meet as frequently publicly, we just need to make that a requirement, and it's, I think, all engineers are on board, it's when you get a homeowner to come in, try to do something with the, uh, Brian used the term once, half-baked plan. It's, you know, they go to the Board of Health, get their septic plan and draw on it with red pen, this is what I wanna do, and that's.
Well, I think it's a striking balance between being, you know, we wanna be accommodating, obviously, as much as we can, but we need to be consistent, and it's not fair for one developer that knows the way that we like to roll and appreciates those electronic, uh, you know, sends us everything we need, and then the next guy shows up and doesn't, and it makes Kathy's life more difficult, so I think, you know, being consistent is really important for the community, so I'll, I'm totally in support of that. The application requirements should be consistent for every application that crosses her desk.
So Kathy, we'd like to keep that on the agenda, or, but let's, I'll make those changes that I see, I'd like you guys to comment, let's not make it a, a public meeting violation, so if I send an email to everybody, don't reply all, reply individually, so that it's not a public discussion, but if you say, hey, let's word it this way instead of what I had, I'm open to it, I'm not. That's the discussion I like to have, so when we get to the next meeting, we can speak individually prior, and then at the meeting, hopefully have the wording right to say, Kathy, let's do a public hearing on this, and advertise that to change the regulations, and in the meantime, we could probably just change the application. So the next part B of this administrative review and updates, we have agenda deadlines. Kathy, can we get some input from you on that?
Uh, right now, it's ten days before the meeting.
But that's not for everything. That's, well, that's publicly advertised for a public hearing.
That's, no, that's pretty much when the agenda closes. Sometimes, not so much now, because we're not under the same statutes because of the state of emergency. I would have to put an A and R on, because it wouldn't meet the twenty-one days, so that would kinda be the only exception, but usually, it's ten days, and it will close.
So, all right, well, I guess my, my part of this is, if the plans come into the office in ten, ten days prior to the meeting, I'd love to be able to get them nine days before the meeting, myself. So I wanna, and if that means the electronic copies, uh, rather than paper copies, just so you can email us, and just, you, I, I'm not even saying so we get the entire agenda, but I'm just saying, so hey, just using them for example, Zenith put in a set of plans today, it's probably gonna be on the next meeting, so here's, here's a look at it.
You, well, things have been not normal. You know, that's what I was kinda trying to do when I got electroc, uh, copies, trying to send them out early, but I'm kinda still easing into my way of working at home, working from the office at night, trying to kinda get back in the groove after catching up from all the shutdown, like, between the two boards, it's, it's really been a lot this month, it's been insane. So that's something I definitely wanna do, but it's kinda just getting into that, if you know what I'm trying to explain.
Well, so let me ask you this, Kathy, if we say that the, in order to be on our agenda, you have, a, a developer or an interested party would have to give us notice with ten days, ten days prior to the meeting date, right? That's the latest we're gonna hear about it. How much time do you need in order to be able to produce an agenda for us, so that we have time to review the contents of that agenda? Because I think where, where this is coming from is, um, we just need, you know, we used to stop in and pick up paper copies from you,
Right.
you know, Tuesday or Wednesday, and, you know, everybody gets really busy, and I think three days with some of the, especially with some of the things we have coming around the corner, it's just not enough time for us to, we all work full-time, we're all volunteers, you know what I mean, so,
Yep.
I guess that's the question, if, if the, if the deadline for people applying or wanting to get on to the agenda is ten days, and we have discussed this many times, what's realistic for you? If our meeting's on Thursday, can we expect to get the agenda maybe the Friday before? Or is Monday realistic? Just so that we should, because we should be planning to manage our own time, you know what I mean?
Right.
Time to review.
Well, like I said, now that I'm kind of going back to a more normal work routine, when things are coming in, like, I want to, as soon as they come in, get those electronic copies out to you.
Okay, so let me, I just wanna run through tonight's agenda, using it as an example to say, you know, item two, the public hearing, that's, that's a ten-day one, we knew about that, but we had that, we looked at that back in February. Uh, but then number three is the GSI, or GS, GIS system with Jamie, that's not a ten-day thing.
No, but it was mentioned prior to ten days. It was, it was put on the agenda because he was supposed to have been the one presenting on Pauline's Path. So for convenience, but that was more than ten days ago.
Right, but that, my point is, that didn't require, it's not a public hearing.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Right, so I guess where, I guess, I wasn't thinking it meant public mir- meeting, I thought it meant anything getting on the agenda.
Right, so we have two, the, the A and R plan, which that's, that's the twenty-one day thing. We gotta deal with those as pretty much as quickly as possible.
Yep.
With A and R plans, uh, and then the public hearings on like definitive subdivision plans or site plan review, those are both ten days.
Yep.
So.
So, sorry, like, for a public hearing that has to be advertised, that would, that has to be advertised fourteen days, that's like a month, actually, like, so I would get that plan, I would send you out the electronic copy, but it wouldn't be on that next agenda, it would probably be more like three or four weeks out from when it's received.
Yeah. So, yeah, well, I think what we're all trying to say is just, so hopefully, you know, things level off for you, and we can get the site plans, the definitive subdivision plans and the A and Rs as, almost as quickly as you get them, even if it's just a single, hey, boom, A and R, that's all the subject line is, is A and R, and we'll look at it, we'll find out when we open it. But like, we have the zoning board of appeal stuff, that's, that's not a ten-day, that's just when it comes to their agenda and it comes on to ours. Discuss Serphead, that's not publicly advertised, that's just something we can throw on, on Tuesday. So I, I guess those are the other items, too, that I wanted to create a deadline for, if some of those things come to you, to not bog you down, so you can give us a final agenda that you don't have to keep amending.
Right, I really would, cuz I spoke to the clerk about that, and then she, you know, the staffing isn't the same right now, so she was hoping to kinda get a deadline of at least on Tuesday by three as the absolute drop-dead deadline.
And I think that's reasonable, so that's why I asked, like, if you could get us a draft on Monday. Me and Barbara would love to look at the draft agenda, and if we had any comment or any minor change, or, oh, hey, could you add something else? And then so by Tuesday at three o'clock, you just had to make one or two edits, and it's cut, and it's going to the print and press. So nobody else can come to you on Tuesday night, Wednesday, and say, hey, can you get this on the agenda?
No, I couldn't, unless it was an emergency, so.
So. So, so right now that, that 48 hours is sort of an already existing deadline for you.
Yes.
Okay.
So I have a question. How would you feel about having that Monday as our deadline unless there's something unusual? Because what I would like to do is have it posted by Monday. And usually I come up here at night, Monday night, get the electronic copy to you and also get it posted on the webpage, just to give, you know, the residents a little bit of time to.
Yeah.
At it as well.
Yeah, I, I feel like, I feel like it should be at least, I, Monday's much better than Tuesday for me. I mean, recognizing that some of these projects, like I want to make time to drive by. I mean, I remember Zink used to go and visit all these sites and I know Brian has as well. And I've been learning from them that, you know, so if it's, if it's Tuesday.
I don't want to close it earlier if we don't get it any earlier though.
No, we can't, you know? But if we could, if Monday's better than Tuesday in any event. Right?
I would definitely like to go with Monday, just because like I said, it gives the residents a little bit more time for, for them to look through it as well. And, you know, I know, I realize like if we have to revise it, but you have to, but I would try not to unless it's something really urgent. Because once I post that with those related documents, you can check it out on the planning board page on the agenda. You'll see the same thing, the same packet that I sent to you is posted now. But if I.
I saw revised on there though.
Yeah, well, this meeting was.
I went looking for it. I went looking for it. I thought you were mad at me.
That was a mess. We're not going to get into that whole email thing right now. That was revised because I originally had to post that over two weeks ago because of the public hearing. So that's why that was, was revised. But when it got revised again, I didn't have a chance to post it up on the, on the webpage. But if I had, then those documents would have switched over and maybe a resident wouldn't have realized that and wouldn't have known what was on that agenda. So I just feel it's kind of not fair to them if they don't really know what's going on. So that's why I just. Only if we really had to.
Back in the day, people used to walk in with a plan unannounced. Put the plan on the table and we used to discuss it. And if, and if it was pretty easy, we'd, we'd, oh yeah, that's fine. There's no problem. And, and if it was a little more difficult, we'd have them come back another night. We just handled it as we got it. You guys are spoiled.
Well, there are the laws that we need to comply with now.
There must be new laws.
All right, so keep it on moving along. I would say, I'd like to be able to see you post an agenda on Monday, but I, I don't have any problem if you had a, a revision on Tuesday that was a reasonable. I mean, you know.
Yeah.
I guess, I guess I'm hoping, I'm hoping the earlier we get to see definitive subdivision plans, A and Rs and site plan review, the better. And I, I'd like to see them before the agenda is posted, just so, I'd love to see them on Friday night. So.
Oh yeah, like.
Having my coffee, I'd love to have that plan to just look at it earlier.
I think that you're going to see a big, a, a big difference in how things are going to, going to be going forward. Things are slowly going back to normal, so.
Good.
So you had also on here advertising and certified mail. Would you like to, I don't think I added those on as much as that was probably just part of the process, maybe issues you might have seen.
Oh my gosh, I didn't read my notes. Okay. I know what it was, I'm sorry. I was running around trying to get internet on my laptop, so I didn't have time to get my papers together either. Today's been a disaster day. But anyways, on the advertising, there was a problem because I had to advertise the other subdivision plan that you have, that you will have in front of you, which you will be getting. I just spoke to Jamie and it's in the Dropbox. I got that yesterday, so before I bring that to you. And because we had an outstanding bill, because it hasn't been signed yet by all of the board and there's been that lag and delay. Jamie actually offered to have it billed directly to his account. So I asked him in, the procedure now is that the paper bills us, we pay the bill and then we bill the engineer. So this just makes a lot more sense that if the engineer, when they submit their plan, they sign authorization, allowing the newspaper to bill them. There's no delay, there's no lag, they pay the bill. I'm not duplicating another invoice to be sent. And Jamie says that's the procedure in quite a few towns. So I wonder how you feel about that.
I don't have a problem with it. I guess I'd like to just talk to Bob from Conservation, because I know we've talked about that there and we wavered back and forth. I'd like to see where he's at with it. I wouldn't want to see it affect our continuity or, or our process. Just, I don't want an engineer to advertise something.
Oh no.
In, and oh, by the way, I didn't tell you guys, but it's been advertised for four or five days. Here's the stuff, you know, I wanted to make sure that it doesn't affect our process in a negative way.
No, I, we would still do the ad, but they would, there would be an authorization form that would to the newspaper saying that it is okay to bill to their account rather than the towns.
I love it. I think it's brilliant and it's going to save resources on our, on our billing team, right? So, yeah. I would like to see that included on the checklist to just confirm that that bill has been paid. And I mean, I guess if they're signing off on it, that, you know, they're going to be the financially responsible, but I don't want to be in the situation where, you know, the developer didn't pay the bill. And somehow then, you know, we ended up finding out, you know, a year later that we owed a thousand dollars to something. You know what I mean?
Yeah, trust me, the newspaper lets you know.
Good.
Like my, my thought was as, as a safety, having that engineer sign that. And yet that authorization is only good for that bill, like that address, whatever it might be. So there's, you know, there'll be no dispute.
Okay.
Okay. So do you, that, take care of that stuff? I think we're going to have to keep that on the agenda for next week, Kathy, just so we can close the loop on some of the stuff we talked about. I'll make the electronic change, things that I think should happen. And then if, after we review that, we'll make it a public hearing down the road, but we'll keep this later on the agenda for older business. And same thing with the advertising and certified mail payments.
Okay, the certified mailings, that's something different. Now, just so far on the subdivisions, definitive plans, the abutters do get notified by certified mailing, but I was speaking to the person in Middle Borough and they do it a little different. I guess they take it there. I wanted to look it up. Like I said, I didn't have a chance because I was scrambling, trying to get internet. So I'll get that information together, but they don't, they actually don't do certified mailings. I think they do, I think it was called proof of delivery.
Well, I don't want to just make that decision tonight. We certainly want to talk about that and find out.
I'll get, yeah, I'm going to actually, I'm going to get a little more information from it. Actually have a certified mailing to go out. So I'm going to, I'm going to speak to someone at the post office as well, get a little more info. But just kind of wanted to throw that out.
Well, I love having a signed piece of paper saying someone got what they needed to get. And, you know, it's great that Amazon takes the snapshot and says, yeah, we delivered it. But if there was a dispute with respect to land use, I just wonder how that would hold up.
And if, just by making that change from certified mail to proof of delivery, how does that, does it ease your load or change your load at all?
Oh, it's a big ease. I mean, I have 30 letter mailing that the treasurer's office can't do because they're, they're short staff also. So I'll be taking that to the post office. So that's going to be a huge thing to get done.
What if, again, from my experience on Conservation, we make the applicant do the mailings and he has to turn in all the certified tickets at the hearing?
I like that. I like that a lot.
I'll ask Abu Shad about that because that's something they've been doing for years. Every meeting, somebody comes up and hands Joe Chamberlain a stack of tickets like that, all the green certified things signed. And he got a list, the engineer is required to put the list of abutters. So he just goes through and checks them all off, matches every certified signature to the list.
Yeah, but they're, they're doing the entire mailing, right?
Yep.
So that means I would have to like get the documents ready for them and then they would have to, I, I don't know. My and I haven't too different, either they should do it all or then I should do it all. I just wouldn't trust, you know what I'm saying?
It's another option that.
Yeah.
We should, we should ask and just see. I'll ask them at Conservation and see, because I'm sure it's the same thing, that the engineer has to fill out the notice of intent or whatever they're filing for in RDA and get the certified mailing done. So it's got to be done right. It's, I think it would become a problem when it wasn't done by an engineer. But.
But subdivision, so there, I would think that there's always an engineer for that, so.
Right. I think that's a good option. They're going to pay it anyway, right? It would just.
Yeah, that's another one where you have to get the cost and then build the engineer anyway.
Yeah, let's look into changing that process.
Okay, sounds good.
So as far as the agenda worksheet, that's the end of it. Do we have any new business? We had that 43D appointment that we talked about. Tracy had sent a memo out to me and I think I forwarded to you. I don't see it on here. Do you think we could discuss that?
Yeah, it's under the, uh, number six.
My number six says discuss Serp Ed Commission.
Oh, that, oh, that's before it was revised.
Both of mine do, so.
The revised one has an A for Serp Ed and a B for the 43D.
Okay. So we need to appoint somebody to the 43D. I'm not sure if there's even a name for it. It's a commission that's going to oversee the expedited permit process. It's not just on the hospital property. It's going to be on any property that falls under that permitting criteria. I would like to put myself forward to do that.
Okay, anybody else have interest? Michelle?
I also have interest, Mark. If, how many, how many people are allowed in the committee? It seems like the planning board could have two representatives for something as planning and, you know, with as much planning in it as, as it does, you know?
It's going to be one board member.
One from the planning board and who else will be able to be in this?
One from ZBA, one from Conservation Commission.
Coming with a selectman, all?
No, one.
One.
Open space. What they're basically, from what Nate explained to me is in 2012, when that started, they assembled a body and they were like a, a planning body that would get together and review the plans. And it was one voice from every committee. So that Conservation could say, we want this. And Open Space would say that we want this. And Planning Board would say, well, our regulations require this. So we could, you know, whether it be a sound buffer or Open Space or a tree wood line along. Those three parties could discuss how to get that.
Yeah, I understand.
Work within the criteria of the, the existing bylaws.
Right.
Maybe trying to work towards the density bonus portion of our bylaws for the development of ZBA obviously would be there if they needed a zoning variance to achieve something. And then I think the selectman, just because it's the higher body in town gets a representative in input. And it's maybe from a tax standpoint or other reasons that they would.
What about, what about citizen at large position? Is there such a, are they going to do that?
I don't know. And so let me do this. I have a Conservation meeting on Tuesday. Let me see if I can be the representative from Conservation.
Okay.
I don't know if Joe or Bob already is on there and I'll just see what they say.
Okay, that's fair.
Just a point of clarification. Do we need to appoint, so the expediting permit committee that's being formed right now is dealing with the first property, which has been presented to us. But we know that we have at least one other coming around the corner. So would that be a different group because it's a different property? No, it would be the same group.
Unless, unless we decide. Unless we decided to reorganize and we're going to, it's been two years, there's no projects in the till. And, you know, Peter wants to give it up and I take it over type of thing.
Okay.
But, you know, that's one of those, obviously, people sort of forgot about it or, but I think a lot of boards right now are kind of reeling with maybe they don't have that person because they never reappointed because that, the process hasn't been used in town.
Right.
If it has, it's been years since it has been used, so.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
So now this group made up of individuals from the different boards, is it them making decisions or is it taking that information back to each individual board and then the boards within themselves making those decisions? I guess I'm just curious, what is the role of this group going to play?
My understanding of it is it should be a very knowledgeable individual that knows that board's bylaws and regulations to go into that body. And you're representing your board so that when the applicant and that board meet after several meetings, they've developed a plan that's basically done. And I don't know that we have the ability to then bring that information periodically back to our board. But all boards are supposed to work together. That's the expedited permit process. Whereas right now, we, hey, have you been through Conservation yet? No, all right, well, we'll motion it pending. They're trying to eliminate the, you know, circular firing squad of, we'll send it to the next board, but if they make a change that affects us, you're going to come back here and then go to ZBA. And if their zoning variance changed the parking layout, then you got to come back here again. What they're trying to do is create a, almost a complete plan before it even goes in front of the boards. So that when it comes to us, it should only be one or two meetings.
And it's 180 days from start to finish, right? This is a six month permitting process.
Yeah, but. We're, yes, but they haven't applied yet. But we need to get our ducks in a row and get somebody ready for this board. So I think by our next meeting, we need to have somebody picked.
So I just want to make a point of clarification on why this is so important. And this is more for the public than it is for anybody on our board. But when developers are looking to make an investment, one of the things they're going to be considering is time and money, right? So like, how long is it going to take me? So the purpose of having an expedited permitting process is exactly as Mark is describing, to have this, you know, sort of holistic view out of the gate and move this process through so that we can actually get the development done that we want to get done, instead of discouraging investment that needs to be made. So it's uncertainty stalls money from moving. And if there's certainty, then people can make decisions. So if they know they're going to invest in six months, they can make business decisions based on six months, whether it's going to work or not work for them. And I think that's a real benefit for actually getting something done. I really am really happy about it, actually.
Yeah, and I, I've heard that we, we do have a little extra time if needed. Like if we say it can't be done in 180, I was told by somebody in town that we can get a little extension on that. I was told by somebody in town that we can get a little extension on that, a little relief. I just don't want it to create a position where we were unthorough. Which six months shouldn't be unthorough. And I guess a good way to think about it is what they're asking us to do is put together a think tack, a think tank of all the members of the boards to get the process almost done before it even goes to every board.
So I don't want to jump ahead on one of the topics that I wanted to bring up, Mark. But just out of curiosity, if we were able to have a planner resource, could that be in addition to whatever one or two people we appoint to that committee? Because a planner resource would be critically important for our community inside, in a meeting like this. They should be attending every meeting.
If you recall from our meeting with the selectmen, they, they're going to lobby for, we are going to get some sort of, much like a peer review, but it's going to be not just on stormwater drainage and roadway construction. It's going to be on the entire project.
Yep.
And that's going to be paid for by the applicant. So it'll be a representative of the town that's sort of an owner's rep for the town. I don't know a better term to call it, but
No, that's right.
Building Department and Board of Selectmen are on board with that. I think we are all on board with that. We just, and I think that being said, having the 43D committee with that in our back pocket, the, the town having that representative in our back pocket is a good thing.
Oh, yeah, necessary, okay.
So to answer your question, we, we won't get a town planner out of this. But for this project, and it maybe it creates a method for us in the future to say, hey, this site plan review is a $10 million project. We want this much paid, not just for a peer review of the parking and loading areas, but the entire project, the, the sound buffers, the fencing, the, the everything, signage. And it's sort of a, almost like a paid planner by the applicant.
Yep. Pass on, pass on, pass through costs.
Yeah, it's no different stuff that we have to do. Why don't we? So I think in twofold, it'll be a good opportunity. If we get a good think tank put together for the project. That being said, Kathy, will you keep the 43D thing on the next agenda so I can find out from Concom? And I don't want to cut Peter out of it, but I want to make sure if we could both be on it, that'd be great, too. But, you know, so it's a good opportunity, I think, for us, if this project being huge, we get that resource and maybe that creates a, an avenue for us to keep that resource, even if it's in a smaller capacity on a project that's not as big as this one. But to, to oversee more
Oh, yeah.
than just the pavement.
Yep.
Mark, before you pass on to the next item, like, do they have any kind of 180 days? Sounds like a lot, but when you take, like, I, I don't know if they've even done traffic studies or even like petition with like the DOT as far as their entrance and exits and the, the number of trucks. Like, you, you obviously can't, you can't give a ultimatum to DOT and say, hey, we need these by, you know, October 30th. So like, how do they deal with that? Does it say, for town matters, it's 180 days, but anything outstanding of that, we wait. Is that pretty much how it usually goes?
What do you mean outside of that? What are we waiving as far as?
No, they're going to obviously have to have studies done as far as traffic impact. And, and also like, I know just for something, one 500th the size, Dollar General or, or the Dollar Store, they had a traffic, they had DOT have to okay it. And this is going to be quite a bit bigger. I was just curious like how that 180 day falls with them and, and getting their answers, you know?
That's a great question with the state curb cut, because I'm told that they take six months just to answer you.
Correct.
But.
I can't imagine that our zoning overlay overrides the state. It must, they must write on top of it. But I'm sure looking at it, they must give it a priority. If we are on, in that category, I would imagine they would give it a priority service, right?
The state? Priority?
Yeah.
Well, okay.
They've looked at it. They know, that's a terrible intersection, but in any event. It's a good question.
Yeah, so I, I don't know.
Do you want me to check with, on Serpide? Do you want me to check with, oh, I forget his name now, Bill? I think it's Bill who, who is in our, our liaison with DOT?
Yeah. Information is always good. I think that's part of the, the 43D committee also is to vet all of those permitting processes down the road that you don't think about, that, or, or the approvals. They're, they're trying to get way into the weeds before they're even breaking ground with signage, you know, everything. It's stuff that we probably wouldn't even think of, but utilities. So we'll see as far as that committee goes, but. So.
More new business?
I think we're, I don't have any more new business.
I do.
What do you have?
I want to just remind everybody, and I, I believe I sent you an email as well. We did reach out to Serpide for a couple of things. The first thing was to just determine whether or not when, Zink and I had met with the, the Board of Selectmen several months ago, you may recall, about a planner resource when we were doing the budgeting meetings. And, you know, it was determined that we don't really have a full-time ref, we don't have, we're not sure we have a full-time need. And the idea was that we were going to have a, a resource, but not a full-time employee. Okay, so everybody I think pretty much agrees on that. And the idea was that we would check with Serpide to see, you know, if they do have a resource for us, if it can be a consistent resource, who would be using it? How much would it cost us? How many hours can we get? What the process would look like? So we opened up the door to have that conversation just to gain more information. I believe I copied you, Brian, it was probably copied as well. Nate, Maureen, I think, and Jeff Walker at Serpide. So that conversation is beginning to, to take form. And that will allow us to at least have an allocated resource. And I don't know whether it's going to be, you know, five hours for the town of Lakeville and planning board gets two and ZBA gets three. I don't know how it's going to work out. But the idea is to just open up the door to a conversation so that we have that resource in place before we get too much further down the path in some of these other things that are getting a little bit more complicated. The other thing we asked for with Serpide was the potential to have a, a scope of work to align the rules and regulations for the planning board, which have not been updated in some time, to be reviewed against our existing bylaws, which have been updated so that they would be consistent. And that's a need that's been communicated from other members in the community and specifically the building department. I think it's something that needs to be done to sort of just close any gaps that we have. And so they're going to be meeting with the selectmen, I think, on July 9th or thereafter at some point. So I just want to let you know that those two requests were started and you should be copied on those.
Excellent.
The only other thing I want to mention is last night, we had our monthly Serpide meeting. And there's, you know, there are businesses out there that are really struggling financially. They brought up the example of Water Whiz, which, you know, is really taking a beating and is going to have a hard time surviving the season potentially beyond that. So there is some money out there. The money's going to go really fast. So I would just ask, and I want to make this on, on public, is that if we have local businesses that are suffering, come and talk to us here at the town. Let's have a conversation. I don't know what we can do. I have to read through the packet. I just, you know, there's a lot to learn on all these grant requests and so forth, but they're talking about it. What's, what do we need to do to support some of these businesses and keep them in place? I know there is a short-term opportunity for money. I think it's geared more towards I'm going to say, you know, I'm going to have to go back and look it over, but there is some more opportunity for money. And I'll, and once I get clear on that, I'll, I'll bring it up at our next meeting. But if businesses are struggling, they should talk to us. Because there is potential to get some, some help for them, both within our community and from the state. I think there's a, I don't want to speak, I don't want to throw out a dollar figure there, but there's some money out there. And it's going to go fast.
So are you proposing an avenue for somebody to reach out or just throwing out that there's an opportunity out there and?
You know, I think that, I don't know, I guess that would be a question. I think they should probably direct their concerns to the Board of Selectmen. The Board of Selectmen perhaps could delegate out wherever they feel it's appropriate. And if they need resources, perhaps they're coming to Serpide and we can facilitate some of that. I mean, I, I think all of this is very new for everybody and we're not sure. We just want to make sure we take care of each other. I think that's the big thing.
Well, I don't, I don't know that the Board of Selectmen wants you to, you know, give out their phone number, so to speak.
Yeah, well.
Well, I, I think probably having them start at Serpide might be better.
I, I don't know that the business is going to get anywhere with Serpide because they, you have to file for the, file for the grants. So I guess what I'll do is I'll put it on the next meeting agenda to have more information about how the grants are filed. I'm just concerned that that money's going to go really quickly. So if anybody knows anybody in town that's particularly hard hit, and again, they use the example of Water Whiz and we don't have anything like that happening here. But if we have restaurants that don't have any way to open because there's no outdoor facilities and there's no way for them to survive, I think that's, that's a concern for everybody. And if they want to call me, they can call me or email me and I will put them in touch with other people in other communities or with Serpide directly. Those, the grant money has to come from the town, I believe. The grant request has to come from the town.
Okay. Well, want to put your email up on the screen?
It's bmankovsky@comcast.net.
There you go. Anyone else, any new or old business that you'd like to discuss? Kathy?
Old business? Does anybody have a plan of Colleen's past? I only have four here in the office. I need one more.
I'll, I'll look, Kathy. Maybe I do from when we first, when we were all still together and got one. One not signed but stamped, is that what you need?
Yep.
Ready to go? I'll look tonight.
Ready to be signed, yeah.
Yep. I'm not saying I have one, but I will.
Well, do they? Don't they need to make some amendments to those plans and have some stuff written on them that we requested?
That's not already on the plan?
Did, did I ask specifically in that motion? Well, I guess it might be there. I just have to look at it first.
Okay.
I'll check also if I have one. I can see in my pile behind me that there is what looks like one set of plans, but I'm not sure if that's it or not.
Okay, so if, if it is amended, then just let me know because they'll have to reprint some and drop them off.
Okay. Very good. Then the last thing I see on the agenda is go ahead.
One more thing. I know I had sent you an email, but I know it didn't get to you about the master plan and having it printed. Jed had, had
Nate had forwarded me that one.
Did you get that?
I did see it. I didn't really get a chance to delve into it too far because I was, I talked to him around 5:30, 6 o'clock and I he, I figured out between me and him what was going on with the emails. That's when I emailed you, but he had sent me like three or four that he saw that I was, he thought part of. So I got that one. So looking to get a July approval and he's going to print ones that have a July date rather than a June date so that they don't have to reprint the whole pile.
Right.
Yeah, and I'm fine with that and I think
You're okay with that?
Yeah, so will he print us a couple with the July approval date that we can get by our next meeting?
Yeah, I think you had asked for six of them.
Well, I think I wanted one for everybody and then if we wanted just one for file.
Okay, and then I can put it on the, the last meeting in July?
Do you think we could get them? So at least, I, I'd rather discuss it on our first meeting, even if we don't approve. And then we could defer to the second meeting in July and not harm the date on the printing.
All right, so I'll see how long it will take them to get those going and I'll let you know.
Okay. Very good. So the last thing I see is the planning board and the PPA, I'm sorry, PAA, July 9th, 2020 meeting will start at 7 o'clock. So we're going to do the first 15 minutes or so of the PAA meeting and then around 7:15, we'll roll into the regularly scheduled planning board meeting.
Yep.
Will you have some information for us on the PAA at that point? Or do we need to do any research prior to that?
I'm, I'm going to reach out to Bob and the attorney and see if they have anything to present. You know, possibly just an update of the project. There was nothing really pressing. It's just the, the scheduled date, so.
Yep. So that's, that's fine. I understand and that's, we were doing quarterly, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so excellent, it's on the agenda or it's being posted as a meeting. There's nothing on the agenda, we'll just move on to the planning board meeting at 7:15. Or do, do we want to keep that time open? I mean, you kind of have it, so they're both scheduled for seven.
Do you want to do like maybe the one for like seven and then the planning board like 7:05? Just in case there's nothing there or like seven?
I don't want to sit on Zoom for 10 minutes.
Right.
If, if I guess that's something, maybe we could amend the agenda. Is that possible to amend that closer to if you know that they're not going to have a lot of information and it's just a quick update, do seven and 7:05?
Yeah, yeah, I'll reach out and see what they, what they have.
Okay, very good. So that looks like it. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mark, before we go, does Kathy, will Kathy have stuff for us to sign on Monday? I don't know if she knows yet, maybe?
Yes, I have the A and R plan and the MYLAR for that. There's Bill and there's still the paper for the registry.
Okay.
And actually, the plans for 57 Long Point are here also to be signed, the amended ones.
Oh, that'll take some time in that little booth.
Yeah, I actually, I actually gave you guys your own little box.
Oh, good. That's a big one. All right, I'll, I'll get by definitely Monday morning and then I get it, do all mine, you know?
Now, on that one, does Brian have to sign that? Because he was the chairman on the board.
Maybe we want to ask the town administrator, town clerk.
On that.
The Yeah, I just don't know if that's kosher unless he gets reappointed. I know he was present then, but I, I just want to ask the question.
Yeah, I know, it's like a hot situation. Yes.
Then I would have to sign it. I'm going to go though. You guys can keep talking. See ya. Bye, Brian, thank you.
Have a good night. I'm not sure about. I, I would want to check with somebody at Town Hall to legality.
Ask the clerk and the administrator what they think on that.
Yeah, and if he was reappointed, I'm sure it's not a problem. But if he doesn't get reappointed and he wasn't elected, I don't think that just ask the question, please.
Yeah, okay.
All right, is anyone else have anything?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, roll call vote. Start with Barbara.
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Aye. I was going to nay, but I would, I would have lost anyway, three to one. I was going to, but I would, I would have lost anyway, three to one.